Welcome everyone to tonight's CoHoS City School District Board of Education meeting for September 23rd. And if we could call this meeting to order at 6:02 PM. And if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I will turn it over for a roll call, please.
This is Gillar here, Mr. Pascal. Mr. Jackson.
Here.
This is Zion here, this is Carrie here, Mr. Annalee.
Yeah.
Mr. Nolan.
Here. Thank you very much, and I'll now turn it over to Dr. Spring to start this evening's presentation.
Thank you, Matt. So we have a new setup here, so thank you Erin, Kegwin, and thank you Sylvie Joseph. So I think this will be a better way of having and conducting our board meetings, so thank you. I'd like to also thank our attendees for share or being with us this evening, and we appreciate your support, and we thank you for joining us as well. So I'd like to call attention to our three photos that we have on display this evening. So on the left, that is a socially-distanced physical education class from Avril Lansing. In the middle, we have Mrs. Bailey's class from the middle school. And then we have a young, young man here on the right from Van Skite, who even though he doesn't have to wear his mask during recess, he has chosen to do so. So kudos to that, that young man there from Van Skite, so, um, thank you. If you have questions, please send them to boardofedcomment@cohoz.org, and we would be happy to answer them for you this evening. And now I would like to turn it over to our school business official, Stacy Mackey.
So good evening. This slide is really just a reminder, we've been talking about the state aid holdbacks for several meetings now. In July, we received holdbacks over $400,000 in the area of BOC's aid, excess cost aid, a pre-K grant, and our future-ready grant. And that represented 1920 revenues. So that was an immediate impact on our cash position, we did book receivables, and we did expect to collect on those receivables, but if not, that would reduce our fund balance. Next slide, please. So state aid reductions could be as much as 20%. So we have, in the 2021 budget, state aid was $24 million. If we do experience a reduction of 20%, it's a $4.8 million deficit for us. We are taking a quarterly approach. The threshold is $1.2 million each quarter. Any state aid reductions will impact programs, services, staffing, facilities, our extracurriculars, and of course, our financial wellness. The update for this slide is we are anticipating our September state aid payment to be 100% of the scheduled amount. We are not sure what the scheduled amount is yet because it has not been posted. So I just want to talk about cash flow for a minute here. So, yeah, you can just state.
Okay.
That's great.
All right.
Cash flow in July and August is really minimal. As I had already talked about, we, we did have some withholds over $400,000. So our cash flow position is negative in the months of July and August, meaning our expenses exceed our revenues in those months. In the month of September, we start our tax collection process. It's a two-phase or a two installment process, and one, the first in September, and the second in March. So for September, we do experience a positive cash flow, meaning with the tax collection and the anticipated state aid payment, our revenues exceed our expenditures for that month. In the month of September, we start to have our 10-month staff return, our payrolls are significantly higher. And then we also start to make payments for tuition for our out-of-district place students, or special needs students, as well as charter school reconciliation in the month of October. The month of October is also a five-week month, so typically expenditures went higher in the month of October. We do have workers' comp installment payment and debt service payment in the month of October as well. So the month of October and the month of November, we do run into a negative cash flow position, which is why I have been talking about we need to take action in the month of November, worst case, month of December, for cash flow. So I'll continue to update every time we meet. These are all estimated figures. I am assuming in the cash flow analysis, again, 100% for the September. Very minimal payments in October and December. There's another more significant payment in December, so we'll see what the news is regarding December payment. Okay, you can move on to the next slide, please.
Stacy, one quick question. What's the next significant state aid payment after September?
And there's a small one in November, correct?
Yeah, tiny.
Yes.
Yep. So this is a recap of what we've been talking again, again, for the past few meetings here. Quarter one, $1.2 million in savings and reductions. Again, TRS came in under budget, implemented a spending freeze. Only items excluded are health and safety. We have BOC services that we anticipate not renewing. Contracts were renegotiated for pre-K, and we terminated our transitions contract as well as our meeting and training contract. And then we had a few positions that were vacated, and we have not filled. The Budget Committee, in the initial proposal, I talked about a couple times now, the high school was to run for clubs near National Honor Society. About the Budget Committee when we met, we did recommend the middle school, National Junior Honor Society, and student council, and for the elementary student council. We had identified other areas under the spending freeze, so the net impact of 1.2 doesn't change.
So Stacy, I just want to interject there. So while we were supposed to be making recommendations for reductions, then we added, so that was a concern that we both shared, basically.
Student council is generally revenue generating for activities, right? And for student, it supports student activities. So where we wouldn't be able to provide that, the student council can still function and raise revenue so the kids can have some activities. Right? That's the reason that the Budget Committee made that recommendation, as I recall.
So any, any activities are going to be virtual for the clubs? Any funds that are raised looking forward and student identified needs or activities, right? Not this year?
No, it would just be another source to support their needs that we may be able to provide.
Under the quarter of one, sports activities, the proposal is the varsity program. So the Budget Committee met on 9/21, and we do have three, four members that participate. Our President, Mr. Nolan, Mrs. Carrie, and Mr. Jackson, so thank you very much for your participation. We have our central office administrators, our building principals, and our directors. So we're very appreciative that everybody took the time to meet and had several recommendations that they prepared for the meeting. We also received union leadership recommendations that we reviewed, and in several instances, did take those recommendations as a quarter-two or a 10% scenario. When the Budget Committee met, our goal was to identify two scenarios. A 10%, which is an additional 1.2 on the quarter one for a total, cumulative total of $2.4 million. And then a 15% reduction scenario would be another 1.2 on top of the 10% for a cumulative $3.6 million. So we did work for several hours. We were able to identify an additional, just a little bit more than $200,000 in additional savings and reductions. The areas that were identified were contractual items, materials, software, and textbooks. Complete elimination of arts and enrichment program. And programs and staffings, after-school detention, for example. Would that run teacher leaders? The stipends would be paid from a grant in lieu of general fund to full-time positions and reductions to part-time staff. We've also scheduled a meeting with BOCs to review, to conduct a full review of BOC services that's scheduled for Friday. And then our next meeting with the Budget, the full Budget Committee, is Monday, the 28th. Next slide, please.
So we also met with union leadership this past week, and we thank our Board President, Matt Nolan, for joining us, as well as our central office admin, maybe O'Shea, and Stacy Mackey and myself, as well as our union leadership from our Teachers Association, our Principals Association, and our CSDA Association. So we thanked again, we strongly considered those recommendations, and I believe we were able to utilize all of them, except maybe, maybe just a few we weren't, but, but they were greatly appreciated, so thank you. We reviewed the Budget Committee recommendations with our union leadership. We also discussed several areas for possible savings and contract concessions. Lunch supervision, vacation buybacks, mileage and building leadership team stipends, benefits and salaries. And CTA suggested reconsidering the current retirement incentive language, and we're hoping to meet with them on Friday to discuss that. And we are going to be meeting weekly with this whole team, and that next meeting is 9/29. So we've come up with a few scenarios that we discussed at our Budget Committee. The first is, we're trying to get to 10%, and the goal is to continue to be open, continue our in-person, our hybrid models, and obviously, we still have, we're fully virtual, but, but those would continue. That is our goal for the 10% state aid reduction. So the Budget Committee is going to be recommending these reductions following our 9/28 meeting. We will report at the next meeting on October 7th to the Board of Education, and we are looking for an anticipated implementation for these reductions for November 1st. So 15% state aid reduction, so we will continue to examine this. Again, this is what we believe to be worst-case scenario, and that would be a $3.6 million cumulative. And the goal at that point would be to examine virtual models at the secondary levels and make, and work with our Budget Committee. So we have a very collaborative process here. And we're grateful to our Budget Committee for giving us input and for working together in what we feel is the best of a very bad situation. So we would recommend those reductions in October. We would report back to the Board of Education at our November 4th meeting with anticipated implementation December 1. So does this mean this is definitely going to happen? No. But we have to be prepared, just in case. It could happen, but we hopefully it doesn't affect us.
We have a portion of our work unlikely to have any concrete knowledge prior to those days.
We're, we're going forward, assuming that the 10% is a very realistic number.
That's my expectation as well.
So.
But I'm not as far as the 15%.
10%.
Generally, we won't know. We'll have a posturing on both sides politically.
Right.
Um, we won't have that next real aid payment until December.
Right. So the, the plan will be to act on the 10%?
Yeah.
And pull out as long as we can for the 15%. That is the plan.
So will we have hard numbers from your leadership meetings, concession, if any, numbers in advance of having to act on the 10%? Wait, you don't want me to say?
So does Matt look forward to that? Okay, from, are you talking about leadership from the principals?
No.
Or union leadership, okay. So, so step number one is to look at our existing retirement incentive, changing some of the language. So for example, instead of notifying by February 1st, they could notify, you know, a bunch much earlier, and it could be effective. It could be temporary. So that is something that we are looking at. And we will canvass to see if this is something that we believe others will take advantage of. And I do believe that's why Scott brought it up to us, that there are interested numbers. So, so that could be very helpful. So that's step number one.
But we would also look at the repercussions of, yes.
Because it could be some of these positions we would fill, right? And, but then some of the positions may be positions that we would have to fill, but at least you would be able to be a lower salary. You might need to be able to move somebody into that position. So, so we'll have to examine, examine that.
Do we know how many are eligible to take your turn? Sorry?
Um, Mr. Jackson.
Baller. I'm not holding it to the number, but just to.
I'm going to try to estimate 10.
AI.
I think it's a little bit less than 10.
Yeah. Do we know this for Monday's meeting?
Um, I think we'll have a better idea, yes. So then the step after that, we need to talk about what else can we do as far as contractual, and what else can we do without get to that, that 10%.
I think we also need to make sure we're looking at, oh, what's the reduction for this year? And what kind of reduction also carries over to next year, because I don't expect the budget situation to be magically better next quarter. So if we catch a bunch of one-time savings and we just take the level down, that's just next fall.
So this 10% reduction is an overall reduction of our entire budget? That's, that's what we're considering? At these quarterly look-back periods, that takes out this quarter of one where we've been told that there will be no reductions to state aid so far.
We've already realized withholds in the hour of over $400,000, so we've already had an immediate cash impact.
Because we have monies that we haven't received from 1920?
Correct. So it's not really an accurate statement to say that we haven't been impacted by the 20% because they've already withheld 20% of scheduled payments.
Right. And so the conversation that we had with John McDonald last week left it with, he wasn't, he didn't have information as to where and that, or when they were going to be paid out.
Correct.
But suspected that they would at some point. Have there been any other?
No updates. The only update that we received indirectly, in the, in an article, is that September was going to be 100%.
But that, that is just 2021 school year, so.
Correct, correct. So if they withheld 20% of the September payment, that would be an additional, if I use last year's number, because they haven't released it numbers yet, it would be an additional $520,000 just for September.
So if we were to act on this 10% reduction, that gets us through what you're, you're expecting for the year?
Hopefully, that's what I'm hoping for the year.
The quarterly look-backs would just be, are we on track with 10%?
Correct. We'll monitor cash position every time we know.
Okay, and then I guess to Rick's point, you already knew that we were $700,000 short for next year. Does this take into any consideration that budgetary issue that we already knew that we were going to have? Because we were using reserves this year, that'll be completely exhausted, right?
Does it take into consideration 21, 22 revenues? No, this is just survival mode for 2021.
I can't just say so blunt, but that's the half of it.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Keep your head in the same.
Sorry, you don't have. So then I guess another question is, from the Budget Committee updates, the programs and staffing at $149,000, are, are those people that, or is the people just the two FTE and the random part-time staff number?
It's two people.
It's two people.
Yeah.
So everything listed under that? Teacher leaders are being maintained, but it's transitioning to a grant-funded?
Correct.
Option?
Yeah.
And then part-time staff, what is that?
So part-time would be the elementary resource for the safety officer, but that person would be put into the schedule for the elementary and secondary, but there would no longer be daily coverage at the elementary level. If the elementaries require a safety officer, they would reach out to the middle school or the high school for a special circumstance, if a special circumstance were needed.
So safety officer still, I mean, full-time, meaning that there's going to be someone full-time at middle school, high school, but they're going to be different people?
Yes, the elementary person would be added to that rotation, and no longer would be having coverage at the elementary level on a daily basis.
Okay, and then the 2.0 FTE, is that teaching staff?
They're from the CTA.
Yeah, it is from the CTA, yes. I kept the $200,000 pretty high level because we'll have a more robust, once we get to the goal of 1.2. We came up a million dollars short. So that's why it's high level. I'll have a more detailed list once we have the full, full realize.
So the million short means we're still working on what that's going to be?
Yes.
And reconvening of the Budget Committee is going to decide where that, or not decide, but.
Absolutely.
Make recommendations as to where that was, because our last meeting was 60 positions.
That was a worst-case scenario of the 20%.
Correct. Yeah, I just want to make sure we're clarifying for everyone involved.
Absolutely. So we did meet with the high school principal today to work on recommendation, what the recommendations might look like, and we did review section of reports. And we're meeting with the middle school principal tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yes, tomorrow. The days are all blurring together.
So do we suspect that this impacts our programming as far as what courses we're offering at this point?
Yeah. When we met on 9/21, we spent four hours scrubbing the wide-eyed of budget for the non-people reductions, basically. So any reductions identified after this, we did, BOC's meeting that we discussed on Friday. And then we're preparing the recommendations, but there's almost going to be staffing at this point that are beyond BOC's recommendations.
And what are we looking at in, to review within BOCs?
All of our, all of our commitments, see if they can, are willing to reduce, you know, any of these on, uh, the current situation.
I don't, I don't know what will, what will come of that, because we did commit that to the services, but we're, that's, I'm trying.
They understand.
Right.
You were going to ask also if we could substitute services that were more relevant to this year? Like if they're not going to let us reduce our net financial commitment, that we can sub in and out services, shift resources, yes, and we'll ask that, I think, thank you.
I took that as an active item.
So at a level, to chime in, because I think Margaret had a good point. Originally, at the last meeting, we were looking at 20%, you know, about a little short of $5 million deficit for the year. And we don't have a firm confirmation that that's not going to be the case, but it does seem like, you know, we will be short of that 20% in some way, which is why we're planning for the 10% to 15% range. There's no official confirmation from the state as to what the number will be, but based on the, you know, back channels and various discussions that have happened, you know, based on our best knowledge, that we're planning around this 10% to 15% range. Again, we don't actually know where that will come in, and it could be higher, or, you know, maybe it'll be closer to the 10%, or, you know, maybe it'll actually be lower, but that would be, I think, extremely unlikely. So based on the conversations, that's Stacy's recommendation has been the 10% seems very likely, and that's a good place to, to plan around for now, and have that option to pull the lever for the 15% if we need to, based on cash flow, or if it becomes a firm reality at some point. But just for everybody at home, when you saw like the potential 60-position cut, that was based on the $5 million deficit that we had been told by the state as 20%. It seems like that is not going to happen now, which is why we've reduced that percentage, and the, you know, now we're looking at $2.5 million roughly instead of the $5 million.
So, so Matt, if I could just add, we don't believe that we will be affected at that 20% level, worst-case scenario, because we don't believe that it will be applied equally to all districts. So that's why we're not considering the 20% based on what we're hearing and the advocacy on high-needs district, high, high-needs district.
We basically check all the boxes. We're a high-need district, we're an urban district, we're a district that's been identified in fiscal stress. We check every box, so.
Right, but we are, you know, to a degree, we're making an educated guess. There is no firm, you know,ness to any of this at the moment.
Absolutely. Think of the 15% as the contingency plan.
Thank you. I just wanted to try to reiterate that for, for everybody at home.
Thank you.
Stacy, what is, what have we, I'm sorry for. John, John, John was nice enough to come to speak with us. He had no, he didn't know, or he didn't know of all. And so this is all on speculation, and I'm not saying that's a negative, right? Let's just, that's, it is negative, it's somebody's fault here. But what officially have we been told by the State Education Department? Terms are, are out of date. We know that withheld some money. Is there a chance that any of that could, could still, still come to us? Have we been told to get that, it's gone?
We have not been told.
So we have, really, what, officially, what have we been told?
So officially, we were told that the summer payments, and we have already experienced it, that the summer payments were held at the 20% level. So that's already happened.
That we would, would not receive that money, that, that 20%.
We don't receive it for now. It's not a reduction, it's a withhold. So the assumption is it's temporary, it's going to come, but we don't know when. So the assumption is it's temporary, it's going to come, but we don't know when. We have had no updated plan on this code. So that's immediate impact to the cash flow, immediate. Um. We have been told to expect a 20% reduction in 2021 after a very federal relief. We have been told that by the stated plan. And we have seen uh the Abrams and perhaps seeing the 8% uh so. We haven't been officially told that September is going to be 100%, but I did see an IR call on that. And I think John has mentioned it actually, yes. Uh, so remember, I mentioned that it was a name update in either of our meeting. September runs are available, we check every day, so we're assuming September is going to be 100%.
It's part assumption, but part real real money we cannot see, that's that's our assumption, that's even good.
Right.
Stacy, September looks like it's about 133% receiving.
Our big, our our big A payments are really like September and.
So I think given all that, you you 10% is is reasonable.
And I think revenues of the state level very grim, you know, it's very grim for municipalities as well.
And I know just to you to chime in again, part of all of this that makes it very challenging is if we get to January and they do say it's going to be, you know, 15, 20% of your whole year that we're going to reduce. At that point, we've already spent half of our money for the year. And cuts we would have to make at that point would be very drastic. And so we're trying to avoid that by doing some of these early to try to lessen the blow of a worst case scenario down the road. It's a balancing act that we're stuck in at the moment.
So I just have a question on on the committee review. Was it um done away where all areas were impacted, all areas um gave reductions and suggestions? Um, you know, I see building level stuff, I've seen, you know, some of the buildings and grounds, um, you know, as far as equipment and and things like that. Was it across the board?
We went line by line. Um. The middle school and one of our elementaries had a prepared list. We asked everyone to prepare a list for the next time we. Uh, but we did go line by line, so you know, we would have been impacted in all areas.
Were some recommendations that were going to be, or some areas that were going to be too nice or a little deeply? And um, yeah, we can follow up and we'll we'll bring that up to the committee on Monday.
Yeah, there was action items from the document that I had sent out. I had actual items identified at the at the bottom, so um.
I know.
There's several, there's several areas that we have to remember that.
Doesn't vote to us not to, you know, everybody doesn't see, you know, those things, so, I mean, for us to be having conversations about, you know, what our next steps are. I think it's important for the public to know where our next steps are too. And if we have action items, you know, I know that we can't be specific on some things, but, you know, we should have an idea of what that means, you know? I mean, again, it's really hard to look at this and not know specifically what what that means, what's being impacted, you know?
Well, again, we're working on it. Um.
I know, but you want us to make a decision at the at the next meeting.
And we don't yet made a consensus when that's a meeting after, but we're we're, everything that was brought up is is an argument to fully research. To see if it could be a viable option for a reduction, we're doing it. So so we're absolutely doing that. We're meeting with our principals again, and we'll be coming back together on Monday. We're also, as as Stacy had mentioned, we're meeting with um CTA leadership on Friday, as well as our Bosies. Um, to talk about any consequences of reduction in regards to what our commitment is.
So so I I think. So we listed the recommendations here, high level, the action items are uh basically, I have all the textbooks been ordered. Is there any more room in textbooks? Uh, meet with Bosies, take a look at staff responsibilities and see if there's any room to change models and uh there are large discussions that we're not really prepared to make any recommendations or.
To talk about publicly, yeah.
Just definitely. We're not trying to hide it, it's just it's, that's something that we know is going to be a recommendation or not.
So basically, we're at the information part, right?
Yeah.
Just information, we're really not.
Right, we can't present in with a with our recommendations in full, yeah, because we came up a million dollars short, basically. So we have to go back to the drawing board. And we'll have more details for you the next time we, but I mean, I. We we did work very hard at it.
I I don't doubt that. I mean, I understand you guys all putting in a lot of time, so I, listen, I appreciate everyone's time.
I think we're all disappointed when we when we summed up the rates, the totals, but.
So I I will report that um time of our union leadership meeting on Friday that us, or not Friday.
We did, we did that too soon, I'm sorry.
Uh, that there there was disappointment from teachers that um our our discussion at the board level in our last meeting focused on athletics. Uh, and I think um, you know, that will be the decision if if we continue at the diversity only. Or is it something that, you know, we may have to eliminate sports for the entire year? Um, so that we can preserve some of the positions in the district, then that is uh going to be a decision.
I mean, I think that the the reason there was such discussion about athletics is because the decision had to be made by that week.
Correct, correct.
That we had to make a decision.
Yeah.
That a 60 number, to me, wasn't a real number, because there was nothing behind it other than this is a value of money that we need to come up with, and on average, it's 60 people. That doesn't mean anything to me, because it it's nothing concrete. I don't, I'm not seeing anything, you know, so. I uh, yeah, and 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 none of us want to cut any positions. None of us want to lose staff. We have really great people.
Absolutely.
And I, you know, know a lot of veteran teachers who are looking right now, and it makes me sad, because my kids had them, I know what what they got, um, you know, sitting in their classrooms. And at this point, you know, there's not much that we can do to avoid those things, but um I hope our teachers know that we do appreciate the work that you do every day.
Very much. We're happy to have a conversation with, about any recommendation that you bring us, John, or that recommendation at the last meetings. You know, to act on athletics, which is what we've decided with discussion.
Mm-hmm.
Right, because we had the upcoming political concession.
Yeah.
I mean, unfortunately, there's still some really large ticket items out there. I mean, obviously, the concessions from the unions could be a significant portion of what we have left to cut. Um, OC's obviously could be a very significant number. Um, so not knowing those, it's hard to provide full details on that 10%, yet while so many things are moving at the same time.
Do you also include a copy of the Bosie's um commitments in in the weekly report? So we can just have a reminder of what we paid for.
Absolutely.
And I know to Rick's point about the future, this is something we've talked about with Bosie's, because many of the programs are, you know, rolling five-year average. And so cuts there don't realize this year immediately. And that's unfortunate with the situation that we're in, but if we are looking for the future and looking ahead next year and down the road, we have, you have to make those cuts at some point, or else they'll never realize. And so that's part of the discussion as well.
But I don't think we're talking about um reducing our enrollment in career technical education.
Right, we.
Because those students are already in the.
They're in the park.
It's a it's a it's a five-year.
It's a five-year average, so.
Yeah, I don't think we would be able to negotiate that, but what Matt is saying is maybe we put a cap on our going forwards, and then we start to realize savings.
Yeah.
I think the onboarding process could be tidied up as well. Because we have kids that are enrolled, and then they drop out. And the numbers at the start. That's used for the.
Sure.
Are there any other comments from board members? Uh, I know that we had received a um couple of comments leading into this, questions leading into this meeting. And I just wanted to reiterate those for everybody watching at home um as well. Okay, uh, I know that uh we did get a recommendation or question to look into whether instead of, because we were having trouble sourcing our Chromebooks about possibly investigating, you know, Kindle Fire tablets instead. And we did talk to Sylvie and the folks uh in our IT department about that, but there are a handful of logistical reasons about why that wouldn't work out for us to roll out, um, even though the Fire tablets are cheaper. Uh, you know, we're built around a lot of our infrastructure is based with Google, and uh they don't actually have physical keyboards. And so there are there are a number of reasons logistically why uh we haven't pursued that route. So that was, you know, if there are, again, you know, potential cost-saving measures, please come to us, we'll obviously entertain them. And, you know, we'll evaluate every single one that any community member, staff member brings to us. Uh, we're, you know, anywhere we can look, we will try to make those savings. So I just want to, uh, you know, appreciate anyone that reaches out with those questions or uh suggestions. We did also get questions on um if there was data on how many students we are sending home with perceived COVID symptoms on a daily basis. And uh the answer to that is that we report the number of students to the Department of Health each day. And um so far, by building community delivery for the for the year, it's uh eight for Abram Lansing, 21 for Harmony Hill, two for Vansky, four for the middle school, and 15 for the high school. And those are just that uh um perceive, some of the perceived COVID symptoms, not that they've been successfully diagnosed as having COVID, to be clear.
Right, no positive um test cases, no positive cases.
Yes.
So those are just the students we reported as referred to healthcare providers.
Yes, and send them home.
Another question was, how many days does it take for those who are sent home to return to school? And it is 10 days without a COVID test, uh including fever-free for 72 hours. And uh students who do have a negative COVID test must also have a note from their healthcare provider in order to return to school. There was a also a question about um whether a resolution was reached with the CTA regarding students receiving instruction while they're required to be at home. And um Jennifer, could you talk about that a a little bit? I know I have the answer in front of here, but.
So uh so we are continuing to refine our procedures. Uh, so actually, somebody emailed in that they can't hear us very well, so I apologize for that. Um, but we are working on refining our our procedures, so for example, when a student does go to the nurse's office, is presenting some COVID-like or related symptoms. And um the student is sent home, and then that should activate um the response from the classroom teacher, the classroom teacher needs to be notified. Um, and then once that happens, we can work on um making sure that that student is prepared. Again, this is elementary, uh and we are working with our association and and uh we spoke with them this morning about having assignments posted on Google Classroom for our elementary. It hasn't presented as um a a problem at the secondary level, because we have so many platforms and and different ways for students to continue to engage in their classroom with their home. So um so it's really elementary, we're really continuing to refine the procedures when students are sent home, so they can keep up with their coursework.
So Dr. Spring, one follow-up to that. Knowing our current shortage of Chromebooks for our next meeting, could we report out how many classes are set up on with Google Classroom at the elementary level, and what percentage of students are signed up in those classes?
So so Peg, I know that that was a requirement for teachers to make sure that they're they're all set with Google Classroom, talk about that.
Yes, um, the requirement during the staff development days was for uh all teachers to set up their classrooms in Google Classroom. So that's one thing. The the other item though is is Chromebooks and students practicing within classrooms. So I do have a breakdown now that um I will share, and we can share next at the next board meeting as well in terms of number of Chromebooks that have been sent home, number of Chromebooks remaining. And I know that principals started schedules today. I talked to Mr. Perry, and they were sharing Chromebooks with cleaning protocols to make sure students were beginning to to practice, but I can send you those actual numbers, and we'll also report that.
So we also received confirmation today from the vendor that our Chromebooks are coming and that they should be here by the end of October. So that was the latest update today and and obviously greatly needed, but um the end of October, it's one month away anyway.
So how many Chromebooks is that?
300, 300, we'll be in good shape.
Where where will we prioritize?
Um, they're fun, those were through Title I and Title IV funds from last year that were able, Title I rollover. So we had to uh prioritize, we did elementary based on needs, so those are Harmony Hill and Abram Lansing. Middle school did receive a shipment of of Chromebooks, Chromebooks already. Um, so that'll definitely help us at the other two elementaries, and in talking with Vansky, um although they could definitely use more, they're um they're in a better place in terms of in-class sharing right now, but we can give you all the numbers. I just also wanted to say that we did send principals are either sent or are sending letters home to all parents with students username and passwords. And yesterday, we discussed a protocol to make sure that as every new student begins, that they also get their username, name and passwords, so that they they have that. Um, when they get that, they also get instructions on how to use Google Classroom. And anytime a student gets a Chromebook, they get instructions on how to sign in using the Chromebook and how to connect to the internet.
So do we still have expectations to be one-to-one for grades three through five, or is that no longer the case?
That is our expectation.
And do we have a process in place for when they do come in, so to get them in the hands of kids as soon as possible?
So again, we have uh Bosie's technicians that can help us, and if we need an extra support, sure, we can reach out to them to make sure that we can have a good turnout. I agree, they're they're no good to anybody if it's still if it's still boxes, um so that will be a priority.
Dr. Spring, can I ask a question, just circle back to the um the students that are being sent home from schools that are showing symptoms? I I misread the the numbers originally. So Abram Lansing is eight, Harmony Hill is 21, and Skype is two, the middle school is four, high school is 15. Harmony Hill seems a high number. Are we sure that, is there anything that's been identified as like, you know, maybe a a certain point? And are we sure that the uh administrators at those schools are all working the same off the off the same guideline, so that the person at Harmony Hill isn't being too strict, or the person at the middle school isn't being too lenient? But it does seem an artificially high number.
So so you bring up a great point, and I think we're finding our rhythm here, um and really knowing when to send. So so that's, I mean, I I did, I think at the beginning of the school year, everybody's nervous, right? And this was a huge school year to be, you know, it's understandable to be nervous. So kids who said, oh, my stomach hurts, I have a bellyache, or whatever, um, those students were sent home, because again. I, I think we have to be able to get more comfortable um, with this and, and not really overreact and, and send all the kids home, but. But, but we're, we're working together, all the nurses work together very closely, and this is something we talked about.
Okay, just for those number, I don't want any parent that's got a Harmony Hill, kids who think that, you know, Harmony Hill is now suddenly a hope of high school, which is played.
Just be very cautious.
It's a, it's a real judgment call, though. I mean, as a parent, you know, your child says they're sick, and you say, you're fine, you'll be fine when you get to school, and then the child gets there and vomits all over. You know, you made the wrong call. It's the same with these nurses, I just can't imagine. I mean, I think any symptom they see, if a child has a runny nose, if I was the nurse, that child would be gone. I mean.
The, the, the person's healthcare providers are on the list.
We can't take chances right now, I mean, they have to.
You have to, you have to be right a hundred percent, so.
And I don't think anybody's being too cautious right now. Maybe, maybe the twenty-one at Harmony Hill, who knows, um, but I think all these nurses. You know, they're making these judgment calls every day, and they, and I feel any symptom, they have to, that's my opinion, they have to send these kids home.
I think the staff did great, all those, that was clarification for anybody else reading those numbers, you know, the job officially died, just to kind of.
It did, but, I mean, it is, it does look up down, so I know what you're saying, I, you know, but.
Are we accepting like notification for kids who may have a pre-existing condition that might, you know. A kid with seasonal allergies who is constantly going to have a runny nose. That kid should not be eliminated from being able to participate in school every time they come in with a runny nose.
Right, so we, um, that is at first where we'd want them to send us in, but we're now doing another. Because I think all of your.
Yeah, everyone, yes.
Everyone, it's not just. It's part of the health.
Everyone, everywhere.
So, um, yeah, sort of.
I mean, that, it, it is a lot of hits for two weeks.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, we're two, twenty-one kids in two weeks, you know.
And Nicole, she.
I mean, do we have like a, you know, procedural, like, if this done that, you know?
So we check, we're calling, New York takes the top of the health guidelines.
No, I think the important thing is if the nurses are communicating on a daily or weekly basis, so that they stay pretty well calibrated amongst themselves, then. We should be comfortable with the results.
I agree, the, the beginning, everyone's just scared of that.
Yeah.
And that's understandable, I, I, I think he brings up a good point, there should be broader call, it's, it's something that is consistent as well. That's, that's true, but it's understandable, the beginning, people that are nervous.
Why not, you know, the, 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 the nursing staff have had this placed on them, I mean, this isn't, you know, what they assign, they're not ER nurses.
Right.
Um, I think they do a great job, and most of these nurses know their, know their kids as well. If they have little Johnny that's been, you know, their little Johnny's in fourth grade, and he's coming every third day with runny nose, you know, driving to high school for it. The nurse is probably gonna know, that is unlikely to be COVID-related, because he's had the same thing every third day for the last three years. You know, and they see a child that they barely ever see before, and he's coming in with new symptoms. Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure there was an explanation on the record. And.
We did also get a, a follow-up related question, which was that if your child has a negative COVID test, do they have to wait seventy-two hours before returning? When uh, you know, they only had a stuffy nose as a symptom? And um, I think they just need a, a doctor's note based on what, or now you still need to wait seventy-two hours, is that right?
So they, a, a negative COVID test, a doctor's note, and they also have to be symptom-free for seventy-two hours, so all three of those. And stuffy nose, runny nose, and congestion, that is one of the presenting symptoms for COVID. So yes.
Thank you. Uh, with that, are there any? Derek, other comments on the agenda before I ask for a motion? Or other comments at all?
I have a question on the agenda. First, I'm wondering about um. The agreement with uh, BOCs for the Google G Suite, I, I thought we've already done that, is this an extension to what we've already approved?
They said Erie, we have to do it, right?
So this is an annual agreement with. Yes. Expires on twenty twenty-three.
All right, all right, so now it's. The last year was. Was then, well, was.
Is this the two D part of it?
Corrective?
Yeah.
Or is the other rules just the opt-in?
Yes, which is the general opt-in.
That's what I was asking, one, that was, was. Three reasons. That we had April.
Is that when Erie won, got the Google approval?
Yeah.
Yes. Now we're just acting on the two D portion of it?
Yeah, that often, yep.
And then I guess my other question is probably not gonna be well-liked, but I don't understand why we're appointing people when we're talking about being a million dollars short. But, I mean.
Are you talking about the Spanish position?
No, we had that conversation, there's like three aides. On safety officer. I, I know, but they're, they're on the list to, you know, part-time staff is on the list to cut in November.
So the um, safety officers, again, the, there, well, we're not going to see the number of hours for the middle school or high school. Um, and the part-time aides, I mean, the, the elementary school are pumping on them, we have made reductions in their total number, part-time aides. Um, but uh, these part-time aides are definitely needed, um.
So these are not positions we're gonna be looking at in.
Could, could I speak to the safety officers? Um, we heard uh, a, a week ago that one of the safety officers that we thought would be with us. Um, cannot join us this year. Um, and uh, we do have another safety officer that's out until at least uh, the end of October. So these were replaced, replacements, because one is not with us for a year as well, I believe. And then in terms of the aides, these are needed to cover, to cover lunch, and I know that, for example, um. Vansky was down to only two part-time aides going into the school year, so below the number they needed to operate.
So, but again, Peg, these are not ones that are gonna be in consideration to be reducing.
Uh, cor- correct, Vance, that part-time aides are needed to, to, to cover lunch, to run the buildings. And then safety officers, we talked about um, some shifts, but uh, Stacy, Jennifer, you can address that more, I don't have the names.
I, I would say it would be added to the rotation of the safety officers. As far as the part-time aides, again, as long as we're, we're open at the elementary level, we're going to need these part-time aides.
In fact, we still, you know, I don't know if the aides, exact day is a hundred percent.
Oh, yeah. That's true.
Have sent any other um, questions or, or comments, I'll ask for a motion for tonight's consent agenda.
I'll make the work.
Second.
Mrs. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Pascal?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dion? Mrs. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Annely?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes. Thank you, everyone, for your comments and consideration, and um, again, I. I want to thank uh, anyone, you know, especially reaching out about any problems with the audio or things like that. It's incredibly difficult and challenging to get this all right, and I thank everyone involved to trying to get, to make sure that everyone can be heard appropriately. And that everybody at home can attend these and listen to these. It's been, you know, a while of us working on this, but there's new challenges every time that we do this, so we're continually working on it and iterating on it. But it is very helpful to get feedback about whether you can hear certain things or not, so thank you again for, for reaching out. And again, thanks to Erin, Sylvie, and everybody involved for trying to get this right for us, and for all of you at home to be able to participate, so I, I really appreciate that. We did get a, a question here just at the end that I will um, ask, and it is just that. Um, when will folks know what positions are on the list to, you know, to be cut? And that's what we'll be talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, at, at least at the, the board level, we should have some of that information. As early as next week, um, but that should be on the agenda for the. Uh, discussion in the October, early October meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we have our upcoming meetings on October seventh at six o'clock, and following that, October twenty-first, also at six o'clock. And they'll continue to live through these meetings, and so absent any, you know, significant changes, that is the plan for the near future. At the, at this point, any other questions from board members? Um, if not, I'll, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn, adjourn the meeting at seven oh three.
Uh, Mr. Allen, this is Stacy Mackey. Uh, we will be rescheduling the audit committee meeting for October thirteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Action, sir, Jen.
I'll second it.
Mrs. Geller? Yes, Mr. Pascal?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
This is, Mr. Dan, Mrs. Dion? Yes.
He, he is definitely not.
Mrs. Carey? Yes. Mr. Annely?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes. Thank you again, everyone, um, and everyone top to bottom in the district that helped prepare plans for us in these times, and now everyone in the school every day, working hard. Um, we've had, you know, got some nice reports of, uh, you know, kids in the schools enjoying the time with their, with the teachers, learning and doing well. And I know I'm very appreciative of the work that's gone in to make that happen, and we continue to strive to let that happen. Uh, you know, for the rest of the year, but uh, we all, we do need to make these contingency plans and plan around the situation that we're in. So thank you to everyone that has put in time. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.